Okay, we're going to call to order the regular city council meeting of August 28, 2023. Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Bixson.
Here.
Salvia.
Here.
Albrecht.
Here.
Gould.
Here.
Peterson.
Here.
Sage.
Here.
Trent.
Here.
Would you please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody, for coming on a beautiful summer night. It's still summer. First, onto public comment, non-scheduled presentations. Brian, anything tonight?
Thank you. There is no one online.
Thank you. Any comments from the public? Seeing none, onto approval of the minutes, the consideration of the minutes, the regular meeting of August 14, 2023.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Peterson. Support. Support by Councilmember Sage. Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Bixson.
Yes.
Salvia.
Yes.
Albrecht.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Sage.
Yes.
Trent.
Yes.
The connection is the approval of the consent agenda is the Labor Day Bridgewater Paint Creek Trailway Commission.
So moved.
Motioned by Councilmember Peterson.
Support.
Support by Councilmember Trent. Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Bixson.
Yes.
Salvia.
Yes.
Albrecht.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Sage.
Yes.
Trent.
Yes.
Madam Clerk, we're moving quickly tonight.
Yes, you are, Your Honor.
There is no old business or table items. There are no public hearing. There is no legislative deliberation. First is reports on regular business, recommendation from the city manager regarding wages for the city clerk and finance director, treasurer, Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Council. Good evening. I think about a year and a half, maybe two years, maybe three years ago. Now, time flies. Council had a discussion, I think, with the previous city manager about how to handle internal, the reviews for our city clerk and our city treasurer. They are appointed by the Senate body. They technically work for you. I think it was, I thought it was very good thought process that we went through about, on a day-to-day basis, you don't get to work with that person and the city manager does. So I think it was more of a formal, the former wanted some kind of agreement like, what would you like me to do for this? So in that vein, I sat down and we went through, just like we do with every single department head, everybody that worked for me, then we would have them self-evaluate themselves with it. I'm going to, in my memo, I talk about it's a little bit of an antiquated form. It's been around since James Petrino. And I know Mark, a couple of you said, we could make it better. Joellen's working with best practices to come up with a better process, right? But it's not flawed, it's just a little bit tired. So we went through it. And more importantly, it's the discussion that we have at the end where it's like, what can the city do for you? What can you, what can we do better to help you do your job? What can I do better than next level as to do your job? And then conversely, what do the city manager and my direct reports, what can I expect from you guys to do it? So we went through that whole process, did the exact same thing with Anthony and Leanne. And we came to the same conclusion that we set goals for ourselves. And more importantly for me, this has been a transition for a year and a half now, and that support from these two, now we're talking about them tonight, their willingness to do whatever it takes to get it done, never like, not that I would expect them to say this, it's not my job, or there's easy ways to push things off on people, right? Or knowing you're already busy, especially with the budget that was going on, Leanne with the elections going on, they always are there to support the team. Anthony says at the end of every single meeting, he's upstairs watching online, that go team, and he means it. It's been a godsend for me to get through all of this, to do this and have these team folks. I said before, I know, everybody in my mind, if you're a good manager, during the year you're having weekly, daily, monthly meetings, if anybody's off track, you work together. I expected that. Any job I've ever had, I wanted input, to know how I was doing, what was the expectations of my boss or my leaders, in this case, the city council, to make sure we stay on track. So it seems unfair that everybody would get 3%. I know that used to be 3% across the board, and we stopped doing that. It was based on performance. But the frustrating thing for me was if, I am proud to say that every single department head hit at 110, make up the number you want, percent of doing their jobs to the highest ability. There's always somebody that goes a little bit beyond, you want to do something for them. But in talking at staff meeting and with us as a team, it's like, hey, we're all in this together, 3% isn't across the board. If that's the highest we can all go, and council's good at that, then we understand it's the value that we have at those interviews, so they know, they're appreciated, I know that I'm doing the right thing for them. So Anthony and Marcie, same thing, they're doing outstanding work. I recommend that they would get the same 3% that all the department heads did, not because it's 3%, because they earn, they're at the top of the grade, they're at the top of their performance, and I appreciate it, and that would be my suggestion.
Anthony and...
I meant Leanne, I'm sorry, yes, thank you.
That's okay.
Sorry. I was thinking of Marcie because I just got done with Brownfield.
No, and it comes after Anthony.
Councilmember Albrecht.
Nick, I just wanted to thank you also, and for the public to know that we were able to see both the self-appraisals and the annotated final appraisal that you prepared on both Leanne and Anthony. So, you know, I think we all supported what you were doing. And do you need a motion for this? I'd make a motion to approve the 3% raise in compensation retroactive July 1st for both Anthony Maggio and Leanne O'Connor.
Support.
Motion by Councilmember Albrecht, support by Councilmember Peterson. Further discussion? Councilmember Peterson.
And I want to thank you so much, City Manager Banda, for making that, going through with that process and bringing all the employees up to date and acknowledging them as well for the work they've done, because we've seen it. We've seen how it's totally changed in those two departments and just gone above and beyond, especially on the finance side where we have more, to where you know we're doing very well, and we don't have to worry. So, thank you.
Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Bixson.
Yes.
Salvia.
Yes.
Albrecht.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Sage.
Yes.
Trent.
Yes.
Thank you.
And thank you, and Madam Clerk and the City Treasurer, Anthony, for your job well done. Next is consideration of hydrant flow testing proposal from DLZ. DPW Director Alec, welcome.
Got a city council speedrun tonight.
Right. Got to keep up, man.
You're younger than us, Alec, you can keep up.
All right, let's keep it going. So tonight we've got a proposal from DLZ Engineering to conduct hydrant flow testing in conjunction with city staff. The total amount for proposal is $22,394. That includes going out and assisting city staff actually doing the physical testing on the hydrants. And the bulk of that dollar amount is taking that information and going back and updating our modeling, which hasn't been updated in a few years now. So big benefits of this, and this is something that should be done periodically, the benefits of this is planning for future water infrastructure projects. We've had upsized water mains, various other projects in the past few years that probably has changed this data, so this lets us know where we're at currently. Another big reason for doing this is that for the fire department's ISO fire rating, that's a criteria for them to be doing these routine hydrant flow testing as well, to make sure their system is adequate for fighting any fires that we have in the city.
I actually just want to thank the city, because until you find out how other communities have handled emergency situations, and they haven't had any water in their hydrants and things like that, that have caused more devastation in those places, it's nice to know that we have invested in the infrastructure here to do this periodically for so many years. I know that this has been going on. My question is, how long does it take them to normally test those?
I believe only a few days.
Okay, that's what I thought, I couldn't remember.
Possibly end of this week.
Okay.
So right before Labor Day weekend.
All right, thank you.
Mayor Protem Salvia.
Thank you, thank you for the information on this, and this is good prevention and studying on our system. And so I make a motion to approve the hydrant flow testing proposal from DLZ for a total of 22,394.
Support.
Motion by Mayor Protem Salvia, support by Councilmember Gould. Discussion, Councilmember Sage.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So when was our last, we try and do this on a cadence, I think. When was the last time we did this?
I believe 2019, right before we did our last big water system.
Is that the recommended timeframe? We just do it every five years? What?
It's every five years at a max, but if we're looking at, you know, we just submitted that DWSRF application for the booster station and water main looping. So this will help us with having accurate information, too, if those projects are chosen for that loan program for engineering those projects.
I agree. It helps have more current information in your grant, you get more points for, it's more relevant, because it's quick, it's closer to the point where you're going to do something.
Councilmember Albrecht.
Just to tap on to Councilmember Sage's question, we asked that question in the infrastructure meeting, and the expert who, from DLZ, said that we were within, I think he said every five years, and I think we're one year ahead of time, which makes sense with some of the projects that are on the agenda. So just want to clarify that.
Further discussion? Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Bixson.
Yes.
Salvia.
Yes.
Albrecht.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Sage.
Yes.
Trent.
Yes.
Thank you. Next is consideration of proposed water and sewer rate increases. Mr. City Manager?
Yep, I can start, Marcy comes on up. Come on, Marcy. So that time of year again, unfortunately, none of us like this, but I will tell you that between Anthony, Marcie, Alec, everybody working on this to get great data, because there's so much been going on with the big water main that broke, that we had to deal with that. And then us getting called out by Shelby, and Shelby getting called out by the Water Board, Great Lakes Authority about using too much water, and they went nuclear and built a water tower, and a lot of moving parts since Raftellus has done this, and Raftellus is our expert. And so it took a while to get educated on all the background, all the data. We wanted to make sure we had full transparency with our constituents, because it got in the paper that, hey, because of what Shelby did, rates are going to drop. So that's easy to say, and in fact, what they did worked, but there's a lot of other things that are moving parts. Anthony's been so intricately involved with the big one, which is Detroit Water and Sewer, I still call them that, I'm sorry, the Great Lakes Water Authority says, oh, we're going to need $40 million for the next 10 years, and you're going to divvy it up amongst your communities. Be nice to know that five years in advance, and they just, they have to do that. So you think you're going to have savings, and then they hit you with another bomb, and another, and another. So we slow walked this through, got great information. Raftellus, I think, at our infrastructure committee, did a great job walking us through. The members of your committee here, that council that were on that committee, asked extremely detailed and difficult questions. Marcie and Anthony and the Raftellus folks were there to answer any way we could nitpick, anything we wanted to do, we had an answer for it, because they were doing good work. Wild card in all of this is, it's kind of been out there, and now it's pretty much public that Anthony was at a place that found a potential other source of water other than through Shelby. So remember, we pay our 20% markup through Shelby. Previous city councils, since I've been here for 14 years, we're looking at building, digging more wells. If we could do, we tried on South Street, we tried on diversion, we tried that, can't do it. Tried to see, could we pump more water out of our well field in Rochester Hills to handle the east side, can't do that. So connect someplace in Rochester Hills. At the time, we could not do that. So there's a group called NACWA, which I don't know if Marcy will talk about, but it's a group of Auburn Hills, Rochester Hills, Lake Orion Township, they've got their own group, and they draw water from, still through Great Lakes Water Authority, but they have bigger buying power, right? So Anthony got in with that group and got them to at least listen to what our plight is. How could we avoid the Shelby water and see, would it be economically feasible to do that? So I know we went to two or three meetings, and they listened, and they actually set an agreement, said, we're interested in looking at taking you guys on as a customer. Huge. So it'll take another meter pit, a few things, but we're working through that process now. We authorized the information they needed to have to make that decision. We ran it by the committee, and we're investigating that hard. It'll take a bit of time, but there might be another way. So in the meantime, we have to deal with what we got passed through to us now, so I'll let Marcie jump in on details.
Marcy.
Okay, so good synopsis, Nick. Basically, before you tonight is using the information that we currently have, which would be continuing to use for the east side of the city, the GLEWA through Shelby. So we've worked into the model, and when we refer to the model, we're talking about the consultant, Raftellus, put together a model, which includes our operating expenses, our capital expenses, forecasting not just for this year, but for several years into the future. So we're looking forward and trying to keep the increases, if there are increases that are on the forefront, keeping them very smooth to our constituents. So before you today, we're recommending that a modest increase in the infrastructure's costing for water and for usage and infrastructure for sewer. So Nick alluded to the fact that there are added expenses coming our way. We're part of a bigger group on the sewer side, so when they do improvements in the collective group, then we're offered those bond payments. We could pay it all in cash, we don't have that amount of cash laying around, so that puts us in a debt situation where we're paying it off on an annual basis. So before you is the proposal for an average use, which is 30 units per quarter, the change that's being proposed on the well side would be equivalent to $11.02. On the GLEWA side, $11.02. It's the same, because the change is on the infrastructure component of the bill. So annualized change that's being proposed for 2023 for effective date 9/1 would be a $44.08 increase in the cost of the water and sewer.
Councilmember Albrecht.
Thank you, Marcie. And during the infrastructure meeting, Raftellus, Colin Dratt did a great job taking us through a lot of this, and you see the summary in the, I don't know, 24 of the snapshot, and I just wanted to simplify it for transparency, which I did at the infrastructure meeting. So when you get your water bill, whether you're on the east side or west side, whether it's a GLEWA or city well, there are four components. Water rates, water rates are flat, they are not going up. The cost of water for GLEWA, the cost of water for city, the wells will be flat. But as Marcie said, and as Nick articulated in his opening, the infrastructure, because you look on your bill, there's four parts, and my bill's coming any day now, and I know I can't wait to rush to the mailbox for that, but the infrastructure for water is going up for both GLEWA, east side, and well water, west side. Sewer, we're all on the same sewer system. So in that sense, the sewer usage is going up, and the sewer infrastructure is going up. So water is flat, but the infrastructure is going up for water, and then sewer, it's going up for both usage and infrastructure, in the modest amount that Marcie just told us about. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, sorry. Councilperson Peterson, do you mind if I, what we talked about today?
Yep.
So she came in today to talk about this, and I know you two also talked about, about, hey, we got to make sure we tell our story of why we're able to get to this point. I remember when I got here, it was like wicked increases, 20%, 19%. And the team, together with council, and our consultants have tried to flatten that curve, like Marcie said, keep it as smooth as possible. Things like reinvesting in a new transmission main from the tower all the way into town, even though that was on the well side, that was a big chunk of money. Very, very important, that DPW worked extremely hard to get this infiltration out of the sanitary sewers. So I can't, when I first got here, I think we found Jason, 54 places that literally had water that was seeping into the sanitary sewer, and unlike when you turn the tap on and the meter starts running, the way the sanitary works is when it comes out of the city, there's a meter, and it reads it. So anything that goes through there, we pay for it. And working with AEW, et cetera, we spent, I don't know, two, three years just finding manholes that were seeping water from the ground into a cracked pipe, or the BP stations tied, because 50 years ago, they tied that into the sewer, the stormwater, instead of into the sanitary. All that water we got out, it took us three years to get the report back from GLEWA and the Eagle to say, we accomplished our goals. We dropped that infiltration so much that we didn't, we could keep those rates flat, instead of paying for water that never went through a toilet or a drain. So we've done so many different things as a community with support, spending the money on infrastructure, it doesn't sit in a pot of money. We're spending it doing upgrades, water mains. Cory knows every water made in this town, what do we need to make sure it works? Fire Department wants to be able to turn on a hydrant, not, what happened to Maui, that's horrible. It's not, I don't know why it happened, but we don't ever want that to happen here. So Alex and his team, Alec and his team are looking to stay ahead of that curve all the time, between DLZ, AEW, and Fishback. They're honest to make sure we're doing the right thing. And we have reinvested in our own infrastructure, so that we can hold those things down, and we're proud of it, and we should be, because it's working. It actually worked. When they came back and said, we were at this close to putting a cap on no more residential development, if you remember that, because we, the sewers couldn't take it. Now the capacity came down so much that they're like, you can do whatever you want. That's huge. I was in the city before that, we couldn't build anymore, because there's no more capacity in the sewers. And we had combined system even, so you can run into that wall, but we've avoided that by doing the right thing and taking care of business. So I don't know if that kind of summarizes any of what we were talking about.
Oh, no. Yeah, thank you, Mayor. No, and that's why I wanted for the public to know, because it seems like, yes, we're always, and I always say, why, every year, are we doing this? But when you look at what we've done, it has been for the benefit to save the residents from disasters later on, and not have, I mean, in the communities that have been flooding lately, they haven't been working on their infrastructure like we have. And I think that's a huge, a huge thing to let the public know how much we've spent, where we've been, where we're headed, and that we're in a good place. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Salvia.
Thank you, thank you. So water rates, always a great topic, and as Councilmember Albrecht said, everybody looks forward to getting that bill in the mail, especially after lawn watering season. Thankfully, it's been rainy, so maybe we've all turned off our sprinklers. But so, you know, in the discussion with the infrastructure meeting on these rates, really appreciate the detailed work done by Raftellus, our consultants, they did go through the details on the model. You know, there are, we were verifying the assumptions in the model, you know, things like, what is our portion of the sewer debt that we're taking on? So if, you know, our portion is 1.1 million, there's some big numbers, some big capital numbers that are being smoothed out into these water rates, because, you know, the goal, I think, that all of council, we've embraced, is we want smooth rates, we don't want any surprises. We would all like water rates to go down, right? But infrastructure's expensive, and we continue to invest in our infrastructure so that we have a system that provides safe, reliable, high-quality drinking water and stormwater sewer for our residents. So I think these rate increases are justifiable, you could call them inflationary, but I think they provide a good product for our residents. So I don't know what sort of exact motion we need, but I would make a motion to approve the water rates, water and sewer rates as presented in the packet.
Support. Motion by Mayor Protem Salvia, support by Councilmember Albrecht, Councilmember Sage.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I guess I want to reinforce this, the point that my esteemed colleagues have made. Five years ago, we made a decision, two decisions. One, that we would always pass through, any rate given to us increased, we'd have to just pass that along, because we had no control over it. But the other thing we did is we chose to invest in our infrastructure just for this reason right here, to allow a smoothing of the rate impact. And I think that was a great decision. We're seeing it now.
Councilmember Peterson.
Yes, thank you. I just lost my train of thought for one second, sorry.
Water rates.
Yeah, no, I know, water rates. No, for the city attorney, so, yes. So for the city attorney, I want to make sure that moving forward, with this being in there to take care of that infrastructure with Shelby, in the event we end up being able to move forward, do we have any way to, like, stop paying towards that, or is that going to just be an ongoing cost with Shelby? If we end up being able to go into the other system?
Well, we'll certainly look at that. I mean, I know, I know that I've been talking with Nick and Anthony regarding this possibility. If it gets down to where NACWA is able to accept us, we'll take a look at that next step of the contract. I know that in the past, Shelby has even talked about preferring to have us off their system, just because we're a big, we're their, one of the top users, if not the top user. So I do know that there's a history of, the contract goes back so far, and it's kind of an awkward contract, but I don't think there would be much pushback from Shelby to come off that agreement. But we haven't, I haven't been part of any of those discussions of getting down to brass tacks, because I think it's very early in the, what does it look like, what kind of infrastructure would we have to install to even make that connection to the NACWA system? But no, they've been keeping me in the loop as to where things have gone, and we'll certainly make sure that we're doing it the right way, where it's not going to come back and bite us somehow.
All right, so I follow up, Mayor. So then it won't, it won't hurt us to be able, will we be able to change the ordinance at all? I mean, or is this going to be made part of the ordinance, or is this just actually going to be a cost for the infrastructure moving forward, no matter who we end up with, right? So it'll be just money that we're putting away for the maintenance piece of having good, having water?
Yeah, I'm sure there'll be, if there's a move to another system, I'm sure there'll be a complete new look at it, system, because part of the analysis is being on the GLEWA system. So if there, if we're no longer on the GLEWA system, that won't be part of our equation. It may be part of the city's rates, because it may be the same, it may be more or less, but I don't know at this point what that would.
It would still be GLEWA water, it's just not that, not that, it's a different consortium, they negotiate different rates, because they have much bigger users.
So then we're, basically, we have these additions to the water bill, with these rate increases now are just going to build the capital plan, no matter what, moving forward, so it doesn't matter, and it's really not tied to the Shelby.
Correct.
At all, it's just across the board to maintain.
That's correct.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Further discussion, Councilmember Sage.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, and I wanted to add to this, I think. So we're looking, we're exploring new options, and that's wonderful, because it will make financial sense for us. But the thing I think the public needs to understand, too, is that we're not foregoing our connection with Shelby. We would just simply turn the valve off, right? So we'll always have that as a fallback in case we ever needed it in emergency.
I'm glad you brought it. We talked about infrastructure, Cory explained to us that it's a series of valves, that'd be our backup pit. It's the same, yeah, not cutting something off, he said, it would be a good redundancy if nothing else. Yes.
Further discussion? I'd just like to say, this is not the sexy part of government, but this is good government, we have to do it. We see other cities have had major problems, we don't want to be there. So as much as we don't like this, I think it is the right thing to do. Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Bixson.
Yes.
Salvia.
Yes.
Albrecht.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Sage.
Yes.
Trent.
Yes.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Sage.
Yes.
Trent.
Yes.
Thank you, thank you, Marcy.
Thank you.
Next, your request to approve the police school liaison officer budget for 2023, 2024 school year.
So moved.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Motion by Councilmember Peterson.
Support.
Support by Councilmember Sage, Councilmember Albrecht.
I'm in complete support of it. I just had one question for Marcy. Um, it has the percent, our percentage is 23.6% on page 29. It says percentage is supplied by Rochester Schools. I'm making the assumption that's the number of students in the Rochester Community Schools that live in Rochester. Is that how that percent was?
Correct. And the, uh, amount that is being, uh, signed to Rochester, uh, City Police Department, it reflects the current collective bargaining unit. So, it's the, it's the, most current wages are reflected here as well.
Thank you for that clarification.
Further discussion?
I'd just like to say, of course, as someone in the public school, I 100% support this and we absolutely need these officers in the schools.
Madam Clerk, the role, please.
Bixson.
Yes.
Salvia.
Yes.
Albrecht.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Sage.
Yes.
Trent.
Yes.
And Mayor, if I may.
Thank you, Marcy.
Sorry.
Councilmember Peterson.
Yeah, thank you. Um, I, no, and I wanted to, um, basically say what you had said though too, because I have seen, um, the work that our police officers have done in all the schools and I just, I, I can't imagine not having them there, so, thank you.
Next is request to approve the bid for hutch paving for the 2023 road mill and fill program. Alec.
Hello again. So, the city held a, uh, public bid opening on August 8th for the 2023 road mill and fill program. The apparent little bidder was hutch paving at 363,120 dollars and 33 cents. Um, city had budgeted $531,000 for this, so prices came back, um, a lot lower than we anticipated, which is very exciting. Um, so, we talked to the contractor to see if they'd be willing to do any more work and they were very happy to do so. Um, so, at our last infrastructure committee meeting, we discussed some, uh, possible options that staff had, um, suggested for, um, adding to that work. And, um, it's been decided to add, also, also add on North Wilcox Street. Um, that is the last part of the current DWS RF project where we are, um, installing new water main under that road, which we're required to cut out bore pits for that. And so, the road is also at a Pazer 3 rating. So, we thought, okay, let's do that one, um, so that way you get a new road over a new water main. And then also, uh, Parkdale Avenue, uh, from Romeo to the street just west of Vodica. It's escaping me now, um, but that one's also a, uh, Pazer 3 rating and a, a highly traveled road.
Is that Inglewood?
No.
Part 2.
Miller's coming to my mind.
Just passed now.
Miller, yeah, okay.
Just passed now.
Fidah Chase, he knows every road in this, in the city.
It'll stop right in front of the water tower.
Oh, right.
Right by Jane's house?
Yep, just right past her house.
Um, and so, um, Seal has been, and so, they agreed to do extra work at their, uh, bid unit prices. Um, so, Seal from AEW put together an estimate of, based on those unit prices, what the, um, total would come out to, which is about 479,757 dollars. Um, so, staff's requesting at the city council approve hutch paving, um, as the lowest bidder for the 2023 road mill and fill program, um, with the elimination of University. So, totally forgot to mention this. Uh, University Drive, uh, we are striking from this year's program because due to the, um, elevator project or the old elevator site, they're going to be cutting into the road there for utility connections. And so, we're just going to be pushing that back here. Uh, once they're all done, out of the way, we can go and do that section of university. Um, so, the request is to approve, uh, the lowest bidder, hutch paving, uh, with elimination of University and the addition of North Wilcox and Parkdale. And in your packet, um, included, um, the overall project map, which I'm sure you guys have seen a few times now, and then two sketches that show the approximate boundaries of where we're proposing to do North Wilcox and Parkdale.
Mayor. Uh, Councilmember Trent.
Um, yeah, I, um, know of the company, Hutch Paving, and they are a good, solid company. Just thought I'd throw in that. I do know of them and they, they do good work.
Awesome. I'm excited to work with them.
So, let me follow up on that.
Councilmember Sage.
Um, have we ever done business with Hutch? I know we've done with Bowen.
No, I don't think so.
Okay.
No, that's fine.
Mayor Protem Salvia.
Thank you. And, and we did have this discussion at the infrastructure meeting. You know, it, it's nice to see a low bid and a, a low bid under what we had budgeted, but it also begs some questions, right? So, one of the questions we had is the quality of the materials identical. And those specifications are submitted to our engineers. Our engineers review them. So, yes, the materials are the same. Um, they also researched Hutch, made some inquiries, all positive feedback. So, um, again, I think a, a pretty good comfort level with going with Hutch, but also have had some discussions like, hey, when you do your first job, you know, we want it, we're going to be there, we're going to be watching, we're going to give you feedback and, you know, we may, we may stop the work if we're not happy with the quality of work or anything. So, um, certainly that was well discussed at the meeting. And so, with that, I would like to make a motion to, um, approve, uh, hutch paving, uh, for the mill and fill program for 2023, um, not to exceed a dollar amount of 531,000 dollars.
That's the budget.
Hello?
Yeah, we're, we'll get to you in a moment, please. Um, motion by the Mayor Protem.
Hello?
Support. Support by Councilmember Sage, uh, Councilmember Albrecht.
I just want to, before they interrupt, I wanted to add on to what Mayor Protem Salvia said. Um, Seal also, we asked the question about Hutch and she, obviously she has used them before in other municipalities. And again, with all those caveats that, uh, Mayor Protem mentioned, said they had done good work for them in other municipalities, but we're going to watch their first few streets to make sure that's the same quality, uh, that we've had in the past.
Hello?
Ms. Turner, do you have a comment on this subject? I wonder how she gets through without being let in. Okay, we'll get to her during, for public comment.
Hello?
Councilmember Gould.
Yes, uh, thank you. So, with contracts like this, is there, I'm sure the infrastructure committee discussed this, there must be some sort of a, like a warranty or something. I know we're going to keep your eye on them after the first couple of roads, but what is the guarantee that they replace that? Or is there a guarantee?
Alec.
Yes, there usually is something in the contract where we can go back and anything that's not to our standard or is done incorrectly, um, to make sure it is done correctly.
Thanks.
Councilmember Peterson.
Yes, do we know, like, how long that timeframe is though?
Hello?
I believe it's one, I think we do one year for these brownfield projects.
One year.
There's a motion, correct?
There is, uh.
Madam Clerk, the role, please.
One, one second. I, I, I guess, and I don't want to make a big deal, but I need to, um, Councilmember Trent, this is nothing about you, but you mentioned that you knew them. So, is there, is it in a fashion, I guess this is for the city attorney to be able to vote, even though you have a relationship?
Yeah, that I do know of them, yes, I do. Well, I don't work for them, but I do know of them. I do not do.
You know of them or?
Yes, I do. I did work for them years ago.
Hello?
I did.
You're not currently working for them?
No, I am not currently working. It's been five years and, but I do know that the work that I did and working.
Hello?
They were solid work.
Okay, no, no, that's okay. I just wanted to make sure that I wasn't working for them.
I can, I can.
Ms. Turner, we're waiting till public comment, then we will, uh, listen to you.
Hello?
Can you hear us?
Obviously not.
No, I do know of them, I know the president.
Marcy's.
Hello?
Madam Clerk, the role, please.
Bixson.
Yes.
Hello?
Salvia.
Yes.
Albrecht.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Sage.
Yes.
Trent.
Yes.
Thank you. Next is also a receipt of the check register, if there's any questions or comments. Um, now onto receive report from the various boards and commissions. Mr. City Manager, do, did we want, um, the brownfield?
Please, if I, if I may, so, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I respect Christian's time. So, uh, today at 6 o'clock, we had a brownfield meeting and we weren't positive how that was going to go, so we didn't put it as a formal request on this agenda because we want you to have the information in your packet, right? So, but I, we invited Christian to come so he could give a background of what happened tonight and it's about the reimbursement agreement for the elevator site. So, it's not a brownfield, it's, remember, the city got $1 million grant. They've been doing the work and then we have consultants and he can go through the process. But, um, so tonight, the Brownfield Authority met to ratify and make a recommendation to city council that we adopt the draft reimbursement agreement that Jeff Haynes, our attorney, put together with the, um, attorney for Moseri. So, we would bring that your September 11th meeting officially, so you'll have time to, to check it over. It's a 40-page document, but, uh, we got through it in an hour with our committee and, uh, it's a great committee. You get some very good brains that really get what we're doing. So, if you, if you may, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Hauser could, uh, give a little background.
Christian, welcome.
Good evening. Christian Hauser, Chairperson of the, uh, Brownfield Commission. Had I known I was going to be speaking this evening, I would have dressed a little bit more appropriately, so pardon my casual attire. But today, we met at 6 o'clock to discuss the Brownfield Grant reimbursement agreement and what Mr. Banda had said is correct is essentially what's happened is the state of Michigan has provided a million-dollar grant to clean up the former elevator site. It's important to understand that the city is not paying any money for that. This is strictly all from the state of Michigan. The city, for lack of a better term, is acting as a fiduciary. They're holding the money, uh, in trust in an account. And what will happen is that the developer, Moseri, will submit applications for reimbursement. Those will be vetted by the city, they will be vetted by Eagle, they will also be vetted by, um, I believe it's the, um, consultant Sam and, and, is it?
Jen.
Jen, yes. So, you'll have three sets of eyes, lots of redundancy going over these, um, requests for reimbursement. Presuming they are approved, they will be, uh, dispersed. There's a expiration date of September 11th, 2024. Um, just a couple very minor notes is some questions that had come up is what happens if down the road, there's an issue where a dispersment was made that was inappropriate or there was a line item that had been, uh, paid for that might not have qualified under this particular program? Uh, there's an identification provision under paragraph 14. So, what would happen is city would then call up the developer and say, hey, why don't you come back in? We've got some questions and presumably they would be answered and they would be taken care of. But Moseri, the developer, has agreed to identify and defend the city for any types of potential claims like that. Um, I think that's really it. There's, there's, uh, there's back payments that are due and owing. So, back from 2021, um, there's roughly about $130,000. I have to look at my number here specifically, $113,000. Of those, 104 would go to the developer and the city would get reimbursed $8,700 for expenses. That would leave $886,000 that would be administered, uh, over the next 13 months or so, okay? Um, then also, one final note, there was a developer who did work prior to Moseri, Frank Rewald is his name, the company. And as part of this dispersment of the $113,000, he, when I say he, Rewald would be satisfied. They would be paid in full. They would provide the city with a full unconditional waiver and in essence waiving any and all claims for payment by the city for that work. So, it would be, um, a comprehensive agreement that we would ink at the next meeting, I presume. If there's any questions, I'm more than happy to answer those.
Councilmember Sage.
I have one for the city manager. So, Christian, you know this as well from planning. So, we had to consider two pieces of property to make them whole, if you will, to get through the special project, uh, application. So, is the brownfield specific to the other piece or does it combine both of them, the sliver on water and university?
Yeah, so it was both. So, when they did their work plan, they identified both, uh, tax ID parcels, unlike zoning, so that we made sure it's the entire site was eligible, so we didn't have.
That's all I needed to know. Thank you.
Good question. So, we'll be back September 11th with the formal agreement.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hauser.
Okay, thank you, everyone.
Good evening. Next is a report from the Sister City Committee. Councilmember Albrecht or Gould?
Um, I'll be handling it that, tonight, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, so, our, we met on Tuesday, August 1st. The Sister City Committee is made up of our three council members from Rochester Hills, David Blair, Teresa Mungiole, and David Walker, and Marilyn, Trent, Gould, and myself. We've been meeting for about two years, two and a half years now. Made a lot of progress and a lot of good, positive collaboration between the two cities. What we've been doing over the last, we meet bimonthly, so over the last, uh, four to five meetings, we bring in representatives from each of the cities. Uh, Nick and the economic growth person from Rochester Hills presented, we had DPW, uh.
Carl.
Carl present and their parks person. So, this time, uh, was our most, our safest Sister City Committee. We had our own, um, Chief Roheb there. And then, uh, Rochester Hills is overseen by the Oakland Sheriff's Department. So, Captain Russ Yizer is the commander for Rochester Hills Substation. So, where we have our own chief of police, uh, the Oakland Sheriffs are divided up by the different areas. So, uh, Captain Russ Yizer was the, is the top person for Rochester Hills. So, we, uh, we got a great education over the meeting, just I wanted to hit a couple highlights. And Chief, if there's anything I missed, you can jump in or dug. But, um, the Rochester Hills has 63 law enforcement officers, two canines, two comfort dogs. And again, they oversee the Rochester Hills area. Between both, um, uh, Chief Roheb and, and Captain Yizer, they talked about what are the big issues facing law enforcement officers these days? And, um, uh, they both said the same thing, which was, uh, the focus is on mental health. And, um, one of the terms he used, which really, you know, sort of struck me was hope, not handcuffs. Uh, you know, back in the day, if you replied to a, a drug overdose or something, they were going to jail, I think is what we heard. And now the focus is on, you know, getting them help, whether it's drugs, alcohol, or any other mental health crisis. So, that was, uh, a very, uh, good to hear. Uh, Chief Roheb talked about, um, uh, creating sort of a neighborhood watch where, and again, I'm sure more details will come as, as he gets more comfortable in his, in his seat, where officers would be assigned to different sections of the city. So, if you had a, you know, where you lived, you would have a, an officer, you could call for minor things. I mean, 9/11, you'd still have that and everything else. But again, something to look forward to. Had an interesting discussion on license plate readers. Again, these are not used for ticketing people. These are used when, uh, we had those Amber Alerts, when they're looking for a car. And I guess these license plate readers, we've heard about them from Michigan State Police, are all over the freeways where we can track cars and find people quicker than, you know, just people looking out for them. But I guess we are, we have some in, uh, the Rochester Hills and we'll begin some in Rochester to help, you know, keep us safe and, and, and handle those situations. And last but not least was this new updated radio system that, uh, it's a new Oakland County system, but it's part of the state system, which will make our, um, responsiveness and especially when they're in areas where their radios would not work in, in the past, are now going to be, uh, utilized. So, um, uh, again, it was a good educational meeting. Uh, I thoroughly enjoyed it and, uh, as did, uh, our, our fellow council members. meeting. I thoroughly enjoyed it. And as did our fellow council members. And it was good to see that, you know, while we have a chief of police and they have a captain for the sheriffs, they work hand in hand. I mean, there's no, there's no borders when it comes to something. If something's going on in Rochester, Rochester Hills, they help each other. So the collaboration that we have in the sister city is shared by everybody we've invited to these meetings, including our police forces.
Very good. Thank you. Next is a report from the Pink Creek Trailway Commission. Councilmember Sage?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So a month ago, almost at the day, the mayor got a call and we received the approval from SEMCOG for the TAP grant on Bridge 31.7, 31.7 for $721,000. So we're halfway there. Let's say it. Let's call it that. We have applied for the Natural Resources Trust Fund grant up to 500,000 additional. We have gotten preliminary feedback from them. It was very positive. So, you know, without the muscle issue and it's not historic. So we're, we're in a better position there. So we're, we're hopeful. But we won't hear anything until December on that one. The second thing, so it's been 20 years since we've actually reviewed all of our license agreements, land agreements with certain properties. So we're in that process now. Two properties here in town are part of our purview. That would be Dillon and Upton and Soleronics. So we will be negotiating those agreements here and I'll give you some updates.
Thank you. Councilmember Peterson?
Thank you. Where exactly is the bridge that's being replaced? Because I think I went over it and I think it really needs to be replaced.
So right past, as you go, okay, so you pass Soleronics and Dillon and Upton, it's that next bridge.
Oh, that one. Okay.
Right by Dinosaur Hill.
Okay. So further up into the Lake Orion area, they have another bridge that really needs to be replaced too.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Cause that one I went over and I thought, oh, I don't fall in.
Ours was deemed more replaceable.
Okay. 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 All right. Thanks.
And they're working on the, not on the trail, right next to the trail on, was it Dutton Road?
Yes. I will say, I ride by there all the time and there's never anybody working on it.
Oh, I see people working. You're there more than I am, but I have seen people.
I haven't seen many. It's taken months and months to build a short bridge.
We'll pass that along.
Mayor, I don't know.
You have a question on this topic? Can you come, can you come up to the mic and introduce yourself?
I'm William Kelly. What exactly is this TAP grant?
Councilmember Sage?
It's a, from the state transportation assistance program.
Oh.
Yes. So that also involves trails. So we were eligible to apply for that. And fortunately, we were selected. So, yeah.
Okay. Also, Councilmember Sage?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Onto the Ra-Ra Board. Councilmember Albrecht?
Thank you, Mayor. Four headlines, as I usually do. Our participants through the month of July, year to date, we have 6,522 people who've used the Ra-Ra facilities or activities versus 6,198 last year. So an increase of 324. Then, as I always do, I try to do a pre-COVID year. So year to date through July in 2019 was 4,941. So we are 1,581 over 2019. So again, more programs, more activities. Our summer camps were, we had to add summer camps because of the people who wanted to join us. So the trend has been our friend and I imagine we will exceed last year when we do our year end report. The second thing was we have three new hires who will be joining Ra-Ra. Kelsey will be joining as our adaptive services supervisor, September 11th. Matt will be joining as, I don't have the last names, I apologize, for our sports program. And then we have, because of the success of our birthday parties and events at Ra-Ra, we've added a person by the name of Catherine, who, their offer was accepted, but we didn't have the start date at the meeting. Anybody who's been in the fieldhouse for any of our mom-to-mom sales or summer events or art fairs knows how hot it gets in there. And several years ago, we had an estimate for the HVAC system that came back at $300,000 and we unanimously just rejected that, saying this was outrageous. And so we sort of tabled it for a couple of years. We had another engineering report and we approved the HVAC system for the fieldhouse of $63,710. We have a tenant there who used the same vendor to put in the air conditioning for the gymnastics sublet of our facility. So we know that they do, do good work and that space is about the same space as the fieldhouse. So we've got a nice feeling about them and that'll get done very shortly, just in time for the cold weather. And then last but not least, going back to Nick's comment, we did redo our review process at Ra-Ra. We also put in an increased matrix based on where they were to the midpoint and everything else. So all the reviews, which we got to just see the recap, were approved. The reviewing, review ratings and the increases were shared with the board and approved at our meeting. That's it, Mayor.
Thank you. Actually, a report of the Infrastructure Committee. May I approach them, Salvia?
We have covered most of it because we've talked quite a bit about infrastructure, but a couple other interesting notes. The four, of the four safety crossings, three are in and the fourth one, I believe, is going in this week. So super happy about that. I've, I've used them as both a bike rider as well as a, in a vehicle and really like how they are really causing people to be more aware of the importance of those safety crossings. The curb program will start September 11th or the following week. So residents will be notified. So if you're a resident on the east side and you see some pink spray paint on your curb, that means that section has been designated to be repaired and replaced. So that's exciting. And then we also talked about having a field trip. So I know many of the council members have seen our entire water system, but some have not. So administration is going to put together a couple of dates in September for us to see the water system, ask any detailed questions. And so we'll travel together in a bus. So I'm sure we'll public notice it, but.
Will Nick, will Nick be driving the OPC bus?
They won't let me. I support that.
And that's all from the Infrastructure Committee.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes, thank you. And yes, I noticed the safety crossings. So they look good. So I have a question and I don't know if it's for the police chief or not, but you know, in some communities, the crosswalk signs really light up and flash and things like that. And we're so busy downtown now with so much activity into the evening. I mean, is that an option? Is it very expensive to have those changed to be more of a flashing pedestrian?
You mean the walk, don't walk?
Yes. Yeah.
You can check into that.
Only reason is, and I already ordered myself a visibility vest because I almost got hit last night crossing right there, even though I had the full walk sign. And I would have had two witnesses right there because they were part, I mean, they were just right waiting at the light. But it was really scary because it wasn't, I don't know, it wasn't like you couldn't see me. So, but I just was curious because I know it's in other communities. But I do like those safeties. Those turned out great.
Good. Next is a report from the Historic Commission. Councilmember Sage?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I think we submitted a press release to the city today. I don't know if it went out regarding the historical plaque program. So it was a couple of months ago that we brought forward to you guys, to this council to say, all right, the, the cost of these plaques has doubled. And if we could make an impact and consider going back to a 10-year ago cost for this program to re-engage people, because we've not had many people go through the process to get a plaque regarding their home. So I think we approved that. So I think we're gonna announce then that we've taken the plaque program back to $150 for the plaque. Once you submit your application, prove your eligibility. So I think we're, we're there. So the city would absorb through the Historical Commission budget, $100 to cover the cost of that plaque. So.
On each one?
Yeah.
Wow, that's.
All right. So the gradery, all right. So we gave a plaque to Lawrence with that site. We're hopeful that that could still be retained once they do the renovation and have it reinstalled?
So guess what? I have the second one behind my door in my office. I owned it somewhere. So I have an original, never been out there.
Perfect.
And it's right behind my door, literally in the, I've been holding it. So.
Cool. All right. So the other question, and I don't know how we would do this. So the facade that has all the Perina Chow painting on it, I understand that the, the structure itself is not sound. Could we preserve that some, some way or somehow and relocate just that siding of the barn somewhere in the city?
Yeah. No, I think they're going to actually, from the inside, protect it and then touch up the outside. So that's going to stay there.
Oh, great.
So I think that's, they want that. That's what they were looking for. Keep that and work from the inside out. So they don't have to take the wood down.
Great.
So I believe they've figured that out.
And then the question that just always comes up as far as the RCS building, how do we get control of the WPA mural there?
Can't wait to meet a new superintendent so we can have that discussion.
Okay.
It's in our mind, trust me.
Okay.
We've reached out, I can't tell you how many times. It's like, nope.
The concern is, because that building is empty, is anyone tending to that? So.
Yep. The fire department, if I may, Mr. Mayor, the fire department goes out there quarterly, even more than that, chief's there a lot. So they're just there two weeks, go through the whole building, make sure everything's functional so that it's safe.
Okay. Thank.
Buttoned up pretty tight.
And the, and the school board is having some kind of strategic planning thing in this fall, and that's going to be on their agenda.
Great. Thank you.
And there's a new interim superintendent. Okay. Onto public comment. Is Ms. Turner still there? Brian?
No, she did not rejoin.
Okay. Onto anything further out here? Onto general miscellaneous, Mr. City Manager?
Thank you. A few things. Some of you might have seen the picture of elderly couple driving, and speaking of bridges, driving on our bridge in the park from Ludlow, going through the park in a car, going over the wooden bridge that we're waiting to replace the slats on their way to the Pink Creek Tavern. Tried to explain you can't get there through the, I'm not sure what they were thinking. They're literally.
Their car. Wow.
And there's a picture of that. Think Chief, you sent me that or somebody sent me that?
I haven't seen that.
They're literally on the little bridge, the second bridge, just kind of like, oh, where are we? It was kind of weird. So, but nobody got hurt and they got, they got them out of there safely. So.
Before or after the tavern?
It was before, on their way to the tavern. That's what they said anyway. So that was a little weird. So I, maybe I can thank the Sister City Committee because last week, Mayor Barnett and his captain from the state police invited Chief George and I to meet so that we could all get on the same page. And it was actually very nice. And, and it was good because our chief knew there got very well. Russ, Chief, what was his? Yeah, he's a very wonderful man and very caring. And we talked about a lot of things. I think you guys talked at Sister City, but, and the fact, and Mayor Barnett was very appreciative of all the help that he gets from us, more than they help us. So the relationship between the sheriffs and police aren't that great, as the captain said, in some other places. But he loved our relationship that we had between the two cities. So I thought that was time well spent. It was great. Art and Apple's coming up in a couple of weeks. Our guys are in full-on mode right now. So if you see, I let them put up a little banner saying that it's coming to town. They're working, tidying everything up, including Jason was able to get the contractor to do, we power washed and sealed and freshened up the ban shell and the comfort station. So they look brand new. So those, we're putting on our best face. They've got the fountain fixed. That thing blew up, but Colin and Carl found a way to get it fixed quickly. So we're doing great there. Chief, and, oh, and the paving. So I, very rarely do we ever let anybody work on Sunday. But what happened last week with the rain, and knowing school started today, the contractor said, I will mobilize my people to work Saturday and Sunday to get South Castell, Wesley, I don't know, Mayor, if they got to Mahaffey. I think they were going there next. So, okay. So it's, the paving's done now tomorrow. They're starting restoration behind the curb sidewalk. So they've done a good job. I talked to a lot of the residents there and they said it's been good communication with them. They got off to a bad start early on, but they picked up the pace and I think we're real pleased. So roads are paved, restoration, sprinklers put back together, all that good stuff. So we're, I think we're in pretty good shape going into the fall. Then they'll move to Seventh and Wilcox to finish that intersection. That's what we approved tonight to finish that road off when they're done. So that'll be done in the fall. So that's it.
Very good. Madam Clerk?
This Friday, September 1st, we will mail out the applications for absentee ballots. Also Thursday or Friday, I don't know what day yet, we'll do our first information push on the early voting. Give Facebook and newsletter, not newsletter, but newsflash. It's also going in the newsletter, but that'll come out in a few weeks. I'm hoping that, you know, if someone gets their application and at the same time they're getting their early voting thing, and they might want to early vote rather than that. So just so they can have that decision-making in front of them. So it begins.
Mr. Mayor Marcy, just reminding me, we're closed Monday for Labor Day. Trash pickup will be delayed one day throughout the city, just so everybody knows. And I knew I had seen the, the press release. We got that in the newsletter. So Aaron upstairs.
Right.
I think you're going to really like the newsletter. It's bright. It's got so much information. It's way thicker than normal, but it's winter and fall. So it covers everything. It's, it's really nice. So we finished proofing it today. Goes out to the printer tomorrow.
Should hit mailbox as September 12th.
There you go. So I'm pretty excited about that.
Question for the city clerk? So this application on the absentee, will this be our last one? Right? So if I opt in?
It, it won't. I know you keep asking that, but because, because of the presidential primary, you having to select your Republican or Democrat ballot, they still have to go out for that one. So what will happen is you'll get them now, you'll get that one. And then between the two, we'll, we'll create our list of whoever wants a ballot going forward. So next August, you won't be getting an application.
Thank you.
We have that little, what do we do? So.
Very good. Mr. City Attorney? Nothing, thank you. Councilmember Gould?
Yes, thank you, sir. It's good to be back. I unfortunately had to miss a couple of council meetings for a long planned vacation. And then I had the extreme pleasure of, of emptying the nest. My wife and I had opportunity and moved my youngest daughter into her dorm. So apologies, I was, and, and I would also like to seek forgiveness for Councilmember Albrecht's absence at last.
I will make the motion.
Motion by Councilmember Sage?
Support.
Support by Mayor Protem Salvia for excuse absences for both Councilmember Gould.
And that's two meetings, right, Gould?
Yeah.
Okay.
For Councilmember Albrecht.
One for you.
Was there a second?
Yes.
Madam Clerk, the role, please.
Bixson?
Yes.
Salvia? Yes. Albrecht?
Yes.
Gould?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Sage?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
You are forgiven.
You guys are the best.
Just don't do it again.
Mayor Protem Salvia.
Thank you. So just wanted, you know, it's back to school time and in reading the library publication, it's apparently September is back to library month too. So September is library card signup month. So get your library card and use it. We have an amazing library. Also, most people probably know, but Dequinder is open. It's open. So you can get your cider donuts and hopefully that kind of moves some traffic around and takes some pressure off our downtown. We met again today to review the draft of the grant application for the community house. Finance Director Maggio is amazing. He has some really cool tools. We've kind of pre-scored it. It tells us where we're weak, where we're strong, what we need to improve. So that will go in this week and hope to hear some good news the end of October. Thank you.
Very good. Councilmember Sage?
Nothing, sir.
Councilmember Albrecht?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to, I don't know if it came up at the last meeting. I was not here. Did that go off? No. But I wanted to give some shout outs to the Sugar Maple Grove at Scott Street Park. We put together a, a press release that I sent today to the local paper. But on that day with the ribbon cutting, and I'd like to thank Marcy and Holly for really putting together the ribbon cutting and all the work they did behind the scenes. But Mayor Bixson, Mayor Protem Salvia, Councilmember Trent and myself were there to, to cut the ribbon. But that's not the story. The story is how wonderful Rochester collaborates and works together. This was really a team, team project by four different groups. First off, you know, Nick Vandis, city manager, but he's also a forester. So what he can do is provide his guidance on what trees go in and everything else. And he worked with a gentleman named Vince Rampola from Exterior Concepts. And we took this vacant piece of land that nobody really used and turned it into a Sugar Maple Grove. So what does that mean? So in 20 years or so, 15 to 20 years from, from now, my grandchildren will be able to, as part of Dinosaur Hill or something else, or part of the Rochester Public Schools, will be able to go tap syrup there and learn about making maple syrup. But that wasn't it. And that was done, the funding for those trees was done by the Tree Committee, which Councilmember Sage and Mayor Protem Salvia are on with me, along with some residents. And so the, the Tree Fund, you know, purchased the 23 sugar maples, which were planted a year ago and they're doing great. Thank you, Colin, for watering them all the time. But then the Department of Public Works said, hey, we got this too. Jason, who's here in the audience, John, going by Bubba, Nate, Christian, Ryan, took it upon themselves to build two shelters. Again, we had costed out these to be done by a commercial builder and it was astronomical. And they went to Sam's Club and got the materials and put up the shelters, added some picnic tables and refurbished, installed a mini book library feature along with some green Rochester trash cans. So again, they did that. It looks beautiful, but that's not it. Rachel Williams, Chair of our City Beautiful Committee was on hand. Well, their committee decided to use their annual budget to purchase the materials that Jason and his team used to put in the, to assemble those, those shelters. It's beautiful. I mean, if you go back there, my, my brother and his wife and my sister and her husband were in town. So I proudly drove them back there to show them this area. And then last but not least, for all the residents to get involved who are watching or listening, we have 22 of the 23 trees, which you can still adopt and put the beautiful butterfly charms on them. You can adopt the picnic or sponsor the picnic tables. We will add benches at some point in time. So again, a great group project that took this vacant piece of property and transformed it into a, a magical area for people to go and visit. So again, green space being valued and improved here in Rochester. And then secondly, I wanted to tag on to Mayor Protem's earlier comment on safety crossings. I also walk the Pink Creek Trail and the mayor always buzzes by me on his bike on every Saturday morning. But I liked Police Chief, what was sent out, sort of the explanation of how those blinking lights work. It's, it's, it's on Facebook. I think I'm, I don't know if I shared it yet, but these are new to our city. It doesn't mean cars are going to stop. It's, it's raising awareness that you're coming upon a pedestrian crossing. And I mean, the most active one I see is the one at Ludlow, which I cross, you know, two or three times a week on my walk. So again, So, uh, again, I, I think if we can continue to circulate how those work, now that we have four of them, which is great, great news for the safety of our, 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 our residents, walkers and bikers. That's it, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Trent?
Uh, yes, uh, thank you very much. That was excellent. I was, the Sugar Grove, um, uh, information. Um, yes, and also, just to say, they're Michigan native trees, which is really wonderful. But, uh, to tag on to that, the City Beautiful Commission has been very busy, and they, uh, members, Laura, Janine, and Sandy, have been working with Kerry Markin from the Parks Department to, um, beautify and add native plants next to the bridge behind the community house. I don't know what you call it, I think it's got a name, but, anyway. And they, very excited. I saw Laura the other day, and she was just talking about how nice it is to be able to work in our public parks and do something beautiful. And people stop and talk to her, and, and, uh, she, she enjoys talking to them. And then, um, the Art and Apples Festival kickoff celebration, as my understanding, is Friday, September 8th, at 4:00 p.m. It's, uh, behind the community house, so the people are invited to come.
I thought it was, uh, gonna be at the, um.
The Shelter.
The Shelter, the Sher.
Oh, it's gonna be the Shelter?
Yeah.
The Band Shell.
Band Shell.
Oh, the Band Shell. Oh, okay, sorry about that.
Uh, that's what I heard as well.
Well, you probably know more than me. I was told one thing, but it was hearsay. I was, just wanted to bring it up. Yes, so, any, anyway, City Council obviously is invited, and Dignitarius will be there, but the public is invited as well. So, that's it. Thanks.
You like Councilmember Peterson?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. So, just a couple things. Um, one, um, I've been attending the Michigan statewide housing, uh, coalition, uh, building, working on the plan, um, attending both Oakland County and Macomb County meetings. And, um, the end of this month, that, um, preliminary plan is going to the state, and it should be finalized by the end of September. Uh, they've been working on it for two years. Uh, we've had only six months. MISTDA started the plan. Um, but, uh, MISTDA was given a lot of money to be able to update master plans, et cetera. And so, uh, for municipalities to use, to update their master plans to allow for different types of housing. So, in the event that, I know we just had ours completed, et cetera, but if there is any push or anything, there is funding available to do that, to where it's not coming out of taxpayer dollars since we just did that. So, um, to let you know that. Um, also, it has been, the question has been raised as to if they could please define what housing actually means, because that is not clear across the board to what, um, the expectation is for what type of housing is being included in that. So, they're working with $150 million, uh, to be able to take care of that. Um, next, um, so, the parking deck was right here on Walnut. We actually have a lot of people who like to hang out on the upper deck. Um, and again, um, when I was walking last night, they, you hear that they're revving and doing a lot of stuff up there. Um, I'm reaching out, because I think that, um, the city, I, I learned that we do not have a camera coming from that far parking, uh, stairwell, uh, going out on that. So, the area that is, when you walk out of the stairwell, that is where people have been congregating, and you cannot see them. Uh, so.
They found the spot.
Well, they've been up there, yes. So, they hide there. But the police department also has, uh, did go over there last night to see that, because I went over the, I went there to let them know that they've been up there loitering, because there was a lot of commotion going on up there. Um, I think that we need to get a camera up there so we can protect everyone coming up, because a lot of things could take place, and they would not be able to see that to help. So, uh, that, and then, um, Councilmember Trent and myself, we attended the, um, dementia-friendly meeting. That was at the OPC, um, last week, and it was a really good meeting. Things are progressing very well. Um, I know Marilyn had to leave, but we, um, they're working on getting the, um, all the stuff together. We should have more updates coming, uh, being able to get that kick-started and kicked off and, and going here in the community, and they'll be reaching out to the different entities. But afterwards, um, Renee took a few of us over to the Adult Daycare Center that is there, because there's been all the additional, Memory Cafe work has been going on at the library, et cetera. And we went in there, and we saw that. And I just wanna thank the OPC for what they've been doing. Um, it's, um, it's really heartfelt and touching to see how much of a service we provide to those in our community. So, it was, uh, very good. And, uh, that's it.
Very good. Thank you. Um, I would just like to say that also, um, Art and Apples is coming up. We're having that opening at, it is at the Band Shell at 4:00, which everybody's welcome. And I think in the past, we've had Stony Creek Band and stuff like that. I wanna give a shout-out to the Police Chief. Uh, he came over to Cedar Brook, took a tour of, of the place, and spoke to a group of residents there who were very appreciative of that. So, thank you, Chief. Um, also, just for council, we have had a couple meetings of our Fire Subcommittee, and we have another meeting or two, and then we are going to, um, have our city attorneys draw up a letter that the City Council will look at in closed session, so that we have everybody's involved in what's going on. We'll kind of report out and stuff. And I, I, I think it's going pretty positively. Um, so, so that's good. And it's Councilmember Albrecht, myself, and, uh, Councilmember Gould. And, um, oh, yeah, one more thing, go ahead.
Yes, it was so exciting. I heard the ice cream truck come down the street today. But it wasn't. It was Chief Shattenhelm and, and Officer Dramer, and they were going up and down and giving ice cream out to the kids, and it was so super awesome. So, I was able to take some pictures and send it to them. Sorry.
Mayor, you wanna, where I can do it?
You can do it.
Wow, so we have two new boxes, um, right out here, finally. So, we have the treasures drop box. It's super secure, it's really nice. Marcy, thank you. And then, Leanne got us the new voting, um, the drop box, the ballot box. So, they're independent, DPW. Um, Jason and his group put the pieces in themselves, and they look much better.
Very good. Thank you. And finally, on a very positive note, this Saturday, Michigan football season opens up.
So, meeting adjourned.
How could you get that in?
I don't know.